Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 15th, and the time is 6:33 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Minutes? Has everyone had time to read the minutes? Any questions, comments, additions? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, yeah, I'll second. Thank you. All those in favor? I approve unanimously. Next is the warrants, 47, 48, and 50. Comments, questions?
Just a quick comment. Jen had a question about those dates that were included. Jimbo had a question about dates that were included. That's just internally on our end. It has no effect on payment or processing. Sometimes the system will default to the current year from moving from one invoice to another. So just something internal at our end that will certainly clean up, but it has no effect on the process.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other comments or questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 47, 48. Are we done all right? I'll take all of them. All right, and 50.
All right, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All of you in favor?
Hi.
Okay, approving unanimously. Next is visitor's comments. I don't know, can we see? Okay, visitor's comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone who was unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that information can be included in the record for the meeting. Do we have any visitor's comments today? What, I know that Marcus isn't here because he's working next door for the senior night basketball game. We do have, if it's hard with you guys, I'd like to make a modification to the agenda and do new business A, the AP Computer Science, with Mr. Kearns because the students here are also getting ready to go back to work for the basketball game. Sounds good to me. All right, you guys are up. Can you send it to Steven? Or would it not work?
You can't send the code in.
No.
It's black code.
Well, you, I mean, you'll be able to. I'll give you that.
You can put the screen in front of the camera. Then you're screen. Can I massage it?
Can you? You can sign in and just share screen through Zoom. I don't know what's easiest.
I think you are. All right, so in our advanced placement computer science principles class, Ms. Jordan had come in to that and we were just kind of checking like she knows people we're up to. And what we worked on at the time was part for our exam, part for our exam later on in the year. It's called the create task, where the students have to create an app for a mobile device. It could really be just about anything. Games could be something they chose to do, something we'll talk about. And when Ms. Jordan came in, she was just really impressed by what they were doing as a vibe because they were doing a really good job. And what they were, and what they created was an app that kind of calculates the bill for a restaurant, adds tax, totals the bill up, all from like your mobile device. The students also had to create like the user interface, what it looks like, all those types of things. So some of the main things, they were collaborative team. They worked really well together. They had to create their, like you said, the user interface, what it looks like, all the code behind that, and we'll show you some of that. And they'll be able to answer any questions you have also about it. So I'm going to do, I'm going to put it on my phone and I can pass it around. You guys can kind of see how it works and then see a little bit of the behind, how the code that they had to write, and the bug and all that kind of stuff.
So I made the, had the idea for a restaurant calculator because working in a restaurant, I see so many people struggle with like what to tip. And so we have, then Emma, who is better at the code than I am. She came in and she helped me write all the code. And then I feel like we kind of worked off of each other's questions. And it was a lot to make because we had to create brand-new code that had, we've never worked on in class before, and create new procedures.
Adam, so you said it pretty well.
So with Mr. Sullivan's house right now, you can, in the app, you have just a text box for the name of the item that you're ordering, and then the price. And then there's an add to receipt button that you press. And then that will display the name of the item and the price. And as you enter in new items and press add to receipt, it will create an itemized list. And then you calculate the total, and it will add all the prices together and display that. And then we have a tip button, where there's three different settings of percentage. It's 18, 20, and 25. And then there's also a custom tip button. And if you enter in that, you press the custom button, and each percentage is a different amount. And it'll call a procedure, which plugs in your total and then multiplies it by the percent and then gives you the tip percent. And then there's another button that adds the tip to the total of the bill and gives you your final total to calculate it. And then I think that's pretty much it. Just had to write all the code.
Yeah, a lot of work, a lot of inputting, teamwork.
Lots of times pressing the button and then just nothing would show up.
A lot of trial and error.
When did you guys first like start to write code? Just in this class or previously?
So I took the initial Explorer Computer Science course, and we use code differently there. We code HTML, which is like the really basic science stuff. We write kind of the heading and the paragraph and maybe add a picture or something. But in this one, it's a little different. So instead of actually writing the code ourselves, there's little blocks. And each block kind of serves a different purpose. In coding, this is more of like a learning tool that kind of teaches you how to make more advanced things like the apps. So I coded in HTML a little bit in that class and made a little website. And then I started learning to use the app and better code, which is what we made this on at the beginning of this year with this course.
I accidentally signed up for AP Computer Science. I was trying to sign up for the initial one. So this is my first time working with code.
And how's it gone of being brand-new to it?
It's really good. I sit next to Emma in class. So I, like, it's very collaborative. Everyone is asking questions. And like we get, we work on different things from Roomstone, which is a site that displays lessons for the apps and gives you different programs to run. And so everyone's asking questions to each other if they can't figure something out. So it's been very helpful because I have a lot of people that do know what they're doing. So learned definitely a lot really fast.
Now, is there any parts of like this that you guys can actually like take it to the next? Like you created it now. Can you like put it into action and share it with anybody? Or it's still like in the tentative of creating phase?
Yeah, this, with this, through this app creation, wouldn't really be able to do that.
Okay.
If we put the code into, because you can transfer the code into the other HTML and then you can transfer the code pretty much, make the same code into another program. And then you could take that further and create an actual app.
Right, so this is a learning program that we're using as a school. Okay, very cool.
Sorry if Mr. Kearns already said this. So there, so this app, you guys, are there other apps? Other people are working on in class? And what are some of those?
Oh, yeah, of course. I saw a lot of like little quiz apps. We made the question. I saw TikTok too. A lot of people make games.
Pretty in-depth.
So a lot of them are small.
On like a 20, 22.
What other people kind of did.
Very cool.
I have the idea to try and make like an existing communication device. Where like all buttons would like help something like namenamely.
User interface, kind of how they set it up. Probably want to look.
Have a button to add button. Of course, that's not possible. App, so I partnered up with you.
Very good. I did a good job.
That's a fantastic idea.
Very cool.
That is a really good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think if you found another program, you could definitely make that work. That would be awesome.
Yeah, this is just a visualization of their, right there. User interface, what it looks like.
That's awesome.
And then all the code that they had to write and put together.
Do you guys feel like you look at that differently now? Trying to figure out what kind of things they did to make them work? I appreciate them more.
Definitely do.
That's awesome.
A little bit, definitely websites more. I have a friendship where I'm doing some little code and stuff, Maxie, that even though it's basic stuff, it's really hard.
Yeah, we have to create what one button does. It gives a different perspective when you like unlock your phone and type in the password because then I'm like thinking about the procedure that my phone's calling to unlock it.
How long did it take you guys?
I believe building it up, or a week maybe in class?
I think we did a week in class. But we were actually, it was really funny because when we started out, we thought we were going to be taking way longer than everyone else. And then we ended up finishing like three classes before everyone else. So we got, once we figured out like the first big bug, we were able to solve everything else. So I think probably a week is right for just the coding and then the questions after. It took a lot longer.
That's good.
Very cool.
I know they're excited to get back to the game.
Yeah. Please stop talking for a second now.
But again, I want to thank Eva and Emma and Mr. Kearns. I think these are some of the opportunities we talked about in trying to showcase some of the work being done in the schools because I think it's easy, right, for people to drive by down 202 every day and not know what's happening inside the school. You drive by these two buildings and, right, they're schools, but they might not be like learning things that we learned when we were in school and the newspaper we had a couple of months ago and things like that. So this is just an opportunity to showcase a little bit of what's happened inside and, you know, opportunities like this. And Mr. Kearns has taken on a lot of computer science, digital learning. And I know announced a month or so ago that we just received a grant to offer a cybersecurity course that Mr. Kearns will certainly be staying to roll in as well. So looking forward to that. Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks so much.
Thank you guys.
Cheer loud for the boys.
You have homework on the scratch. Slide it in.
Just slides.
There you go. All right, you guys have fun. Go Gramby.
Bye, Mom.
Okay, Brad, you have verbal permission. That's great.
I do really enjoy these showcases too. I mean, I really like these showcases of like showing kind of what's happening in the buildings. I think it's such a nice addition. I hope we can keep rallying more people willing to come and see us and share. I really do.
We can talk to some others and there's some apprehension, but I think sometimes the more that we do it, the more that they become familiar with it too. You know, it's not just at the junior, senior high school too. There's things happening here at East Meadow that we would certainly want to showcase as well. And I think, you know, everyone knows I'm most familiar there still. So like starting with some of those things, wanted to bring those up. But I think certainly pre-K, 212, there's opportunities for people to see some things.
I would love it.
Me too. I loved having the kids here and teacher. I think that was awesome. It was great that they were all able to come in and give us a little insight from them. It's so nice to hear. I know that you do an awesome update too. It's so nice to hear from them. So I hope we keep going in that direction. They feel comfortable with us. Like, you know, it's new faces, especially for a lot of us here too. Like to go across the street or vice versa and come here, it's kind of nice to build that. It's all that relationship building that we're talking about.
All right, so you're going to run next door?
I'm going to run to senior right too briefly, and then we're doing Chartwell's, and I'll be back.
Cheryl, will Cheryl want to list the participants?
No.
Because I, I just skipped right over that. So we'll have to reach out and see if we can get her to start to come back. Next up is Chartwells. Hello, how are you?
Hello, everybody.
Oh, that's better. Should we ask him if he can hear us okay? Yeah, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Perfectly clear.
Excellent. Nope, and your audio is a little distorted.
Do they, are they allowed to share their videos? Or I don't know if they're trying to.
Sound like a no. Better, better?
We can definitely hear Chris Callahan very well, but Ken, yours was a little garbled.
We don't have YouTube running, right?
Oh, yes, it says live, okay. Oh, you mean at the same time?
At the same time.
I think we'd all echo.
Technology.
Isn't that great?
Sounds good right now.
Little good, your video, but we still don't have video.
Oh, they turned it on.
It was on. It's not started. Okay?
Yep, yep.
Okay, talk about. You might want to. We can look for that one. It's still so. And then you want to. Definitely. My goal is to. Mark? Chair? I'm going to chat. We have, we have, I'm putting it back down. We didn't do many days. We have a whole. Just a little. Our options. We're going to. Going to. Kind of. Do some. Right. Seventeen. We got seven parts. We're going to. Actually, we did the one-on-one. Something. Main menu. We're changing that. Whatever. Changing. I'm not sure. Changing whatever. Main menu changes. Main menu. Just trying to keep them. Um, that's five. We see the whole world. Everyone. I'm at the floor. I'm at the top of the day. We have. Seven hours. We're going over there. Denver. So very. I have that. Somebody will want to keep it going off. Numbers are there. Yeah, we know. They're actually not the four from one-on-one. They're hiding. They're aware of that. And the height.
Yeah, I didn't hear what that, I, I He was asking if Chris had anything more to add. Oh.
Okay. I couldn't understand Ken too much from this level. I know that we've seen improvement in our staffing levels and our supply chain is improving as well.
I actually just forwarded over funding information or we're looking at from the state regarding supply chain. So Gramby should be able to be able to receive some funding to help with some of the supply chain issues because they're offering funding from the state.
Okay, good.
But as I mentioned, the year is going very well. Ken has done a great job with his team. Financially, we're really sound. And we haven't heard any word from the state regarding next year. Sounds like we're going back to pretty much normal, regular NSLP program and school breakfast program. I know there are a couple of states that are going to continue with free service in Maine and California, but that's all we've heard about so far. So as we get more information, we'll share. But it looks like back to normal next school year.
I'm curious how the participation has been this year. I know last year it was really high because we were also doing the drive-up meals and that. Do we have an update on how that's been going? I know it is still free to all students, which is probably also increasing participation.
It has. I've seen it across the board. I've seen it in Ken's numbers, and I've seen in other districts too. We're looking at an average of 70% or higher for participation because the meals are free, which is great.
It is great. And we're not doing any meals on vacations or anything like that at this, anymore, right?
Now, they stopped allowing weekends and breaks. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Chris. Just one more thing. As far as East Meadow, we have, in the program, we did a breakfast after the bell program here at East Meadow. And since then, our counts have gone over 60% for breakfast. We're feeding probably three-quarters of students for breakfast every day there, which is phenomenal.
That's fantastic.
That's pretty much all I have for as far as food service. So any questions?
And I can hear, I can hear you a little better, Ken. I wasn't sure if you did go over the high school temporary setup. I know it is going very well. But it's, is it, are we holding around there? Is it, are students still appreciating the options we have in that small space?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now? I feel like I might have fixed something, no?
Yes, we can hear much better.
Okay. Yeah, like I was saying, I think we've kept the kids engaged. Like I said, in March, we're going to do some more action stations because during the tailgate party this past Friday, I mean, we, the kids were like, they were excited out there. It was, it was crazy. These kids were coming back for second meals. I mean, just, just having somebody there preparing the meals in front of them, we thought maybe it was going to be a challenge because of the small space, but we got them in and out. And they were very appreciative. I mean, we got a couple of thank you letters today from the students saying thank you for Friday's tailgate party. I mean, that's what it's all about. It was wonderful.
That's awesome. I saw pictures of it. It looked terrific. I was so impressed online. And I think East Meadow too, there were Valentine cookies that went around. And I think what was neat about that too is even if you were someone who brought their lunch from home, because the free program, I believe everyone was included in that, was my understanding, which was really awesome. So I just thank you guys so much for all of that. I think it's great. And I am curious with the breakfast numbers, just to, in the back of our heads. My, I think a lot of the classes are still going to the cafeteria for snacks, which probably help the breakfast counts.
Yeah, that's what the breakfast after the bell is basically. After the bell, they come down. Every class comes down for like 10 minutes and they grab a breakfast, which is, it's great. I mean, like I said, we're doing three-quarters of the students for breakfast.
So that may be an option that we want to keep moving forward, even if we, you know, get out of this, or whatever new normal we're calling this. If things can change, like maybe that's working for us. It's something that we can consider.
Absolutely.
That's what I was going to ask actually, was my question was whether or not breakfast after the bell would also continue from two sides. Like I'm thinking of also, you know, my child is eating some of the meals. I know she'll be like, oh, I already ate breakfast, but it was there, so I grabbed it again. But versus like, once I'm paying for it, I might be a little more like, hey, 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 you know, too, if she already ate breakfast at home and is not fully eating it too. So I was just kind of curious how that might look next year too.
Yeah, we could definitely take a look at it. I mean, either that or breakfast in the classroom. Those are two great options, I think.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ken or Chris? Thanks, guys. We appreciate you coming on.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
Sorry about that.
Nope, thank you. So next up is the calendar, but I think we should go out of order. I feel like Steven should probably be here when we discuss this.
I agree.
So with that, we can break out to our work group meetings. And then when we come back, we'll re, break, do the report out from the groups. And then we'll circle back and do the school calendar. And then we have a couple of other things on the agenda to discuss. Does that sound okay to everybody? So the, we have three committees. Evaluation and policy are the same two. It's Audrey and Jill. So you guys were just going to split your time between
The two.
The two. And then we have budget and finance with the Gens. And Stephanie, you can go wherever you would like. I think, Adam, do you want to stay in here for budget? Okay, let's see, it's seven o'clock. So 7:30, 7:45? What do you guys think?
I think if possible, 7:30 might be good because there seems to be quite a bit to discuss after-work groups. If people are, think that's enough time.
Why don't we touch base at 7:30? And if we need to extend, we will.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, great. So we'll see everybody again at 7:30. I'm muted. All right, everybody, welcome back. Okay, policy and evaluation. You guys can decide which and how.
We already decided.
Oh, okay, perfect.
You decided, it's fine.
So, in terms of the Evaluation Subcommittee, we didn't have a lot of time to spend on that, which is fine, but we're going to work just on making copies and making sure those folders are ready for everybody for our next meeting. That's just the rest of the work that's left in that area. And then the Policy Subcommittee, we spent pretty much all of our time on Section D and looking at the changes that MASC had provided some information on with updating, like fiscal management goals, and just looking at the changes and making sure that they matched with what was proposed. And we just had a couple of kind of follow-up questions to that, that we'll follow up with Stephen about later. And that was pretty much it. I think that Policy, after the couple of questions are answered, will be pretty much ready to come forward to the full committee.
For a first read?
Yep, for a first read.
Yeah, awesome.
Excellent. Any questions for them? Okay. Budget and Finance, who wants to talk?
You guys. You're the submit.
Yeah. Okay. They wrapped up meetings with the department heads and principals to fill in requests for the FY '23 budget. They were requesting their wants and needs, what is their necessities, and then they're going to go back and look at that to find out what they can take away. They also discussed percentage decreases of 5, 10, and 20% reductions in how they can move forward in each school and each department with the scenarios. And then we discussed the calendar. We're going to do a review on the 28th, the department heads and principals, and then we'll have a, March 8th is a special-
March 8th is, yeah, we decided March 8th was going to be the finance-
Yeah.
The special budget presentation.
We're going to have March 8th be-
A special budget presentation.
Yeah, just like the high-level-
Yep.
Budget stuff.
So, and then depending on when we have our meeting for the next few dates, but we're definitely going to make a public hearing by April 4th.
Yeah, public hearing hopefully by, well, the week of April 4th, you know, public forum-
On the 20th, March 22nd.
Later in March. Yeah, so.
Okay. That's pretty much it.
Any questions or anything on the budget stuff? Also, I just sent an email out to the chairs of the other two committees and Chris to see if we can schedule our joint committee budget meeting. So, more to come on that when I start to hear back from them.
Was there a tentative date?
Sometime before the, before March 14th is what we said. So, that's three, within three weeks. So, it feels like that should be a decent amount, enough amount of time to be able to get something on the calendar. So, once we get some dates, I'll pass them along, and we'll see if we can come to some agreement. All right. Okay. So, real quick, let's go back to the school calendar for 2022, 2023.
So, just so everyone's aware, in terms of process, this was shared with district leadership team. I also shared it with the GEA president and vice president, and then they shared it with the executive board. Received some feedback from them. Did make some adjustments to the calendar based on the feedback from the union. I think the big takeaway from this, and really this came from feedback from the executive board, this current calendar has November, Wednesday, November 23rd is a day off versus the half-day that we've typically had. It does have December 23rd as a half-day, which we voted to put in place this year. So, those are, I would say, some of the real significant changes that we might notice. We maintained that Friday prior to Labor Day. That was a day off. There was some talk around that, but I think for the most part, teachers felt like they appreciated that, and it was a nice way to ease back in, and an extended weekend was a nice way to end the summer for them. You know, maintained curriculum, half-days, mid-week, and made a couple of date changes based on that. And then the November 8th is an election day. We were kind of back and forth with where we should have our full-day curriculum day, and then I heard from the town clerk with that election day and it being in the building with the election. After talking to the union, we landed on that. It creates a bit of a funky week, unfortunately, because Veterans Day does fall that Friday, but that would be a day off for students, but a curriculum day for teachers. So, those are the high-level look at it, but certainly don't know if people have questions. We did talk about a little bit of a Good Friday in the past. It's been a day off. In some years, it hasn't. This year-
So, usually, when we've done the Good Friday off, it rolls into school vacation week following after Easter. So, it feels like either Good Friday should, I mean, Good Friday is fine, but then do we adjust spring vacation week, or, I don't know, is, well, isn't there another day during the April vacation that's something?
Typically, it's-
No, I don't think there's any other, there's no holidays in April.
Patriots' Day.
Patriots' Day, yes.
That's April 11th, which is during when April vacation would be, but we don't have that listed as one of our holidays.
No, April, April vacation is the week of 17th. Yeah.
Pretty sure Patriots' Day, I don't think-
It's April 18th. Patriots' Day is April 18th.
So, we wouldn't be in school. School would be especially on April 18th anyways. What's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
It's not a day off from school, though, is it?
It's not normally a day off from school.
Like, Massachusetts.
So, the problem would be is they would get, if we moved up April vacation, they would get a week off, and then they would also get the 18th off because it's a Massachusetts holiday.
But right now-
It's not listed as one of our holidays.
Because we already have spring vacation during it, possibly?
Yeah.
I think it's similar to February. We don't list-
President's Day.
No, I think President's Day is- President's Day is listed, right?
No, it's not.
So, April 17th for 2023. Right, so that's already part of the-
I was looking at 22.
Yeah, so that, that's already, we're, they're off that week anyways. The only thing is that week, I just think, I guess that November week's a little funky, but if that's already talked about, then that curriculum full day on the 8th, right?
Because it's, it's election day, so you can't have the kids in school when it's the full election. There's a presidential election here.
Yeah, we've done it. It's just not-
Right, yeah, no, it makes sense.
I only noticed-
November 22 is a presidential election?
No.
No.
It's a midterm election, so it's not presidential, but-
I thought we just did no school on presidential and didn't just-
Right, because in years past, we have had school.
But, I mean, if the union is, that, then it feels like it's probably, and we still get the, to a right number of days. It feels like there's a lot more days off than usual,
I'm surprised that they wanted to do the full day off the, during Thanksgiving and not the 23rd. That's a little surprising, but that's all right.
Was that an option, though?
Was that an option?
What's that?
Having November 23rd being the full day and December 23rd being the half-day, was that an option, or is that the way that everyone wanted?
It could be. November 23rd, as long as I've been in the district, has never been a full day.
I'd rather do half-days on both days. November 23rd, a half-day, and December 23rd, a half-day. But, you know, if I were picking.
Yeah, and again, I mean, if we sent it to full membership, we would have gotten one piece of different nature, so it really went to the executive.
Right, right.
Based on their feedback, we made some adjustments, because we had it in originally as a half-day.
I just feel like the 23rd, December 23rd is going to be, to have that day be a full day seems like a lot.
It's not, it's a half-day.
A half-day. Sorry, sorry.
My only comment that I noticed was that May 19th was bolded. I had like, like, and there's no reason for it to be, unless it was previously.
I think it might just be the font, because if you look at June 18th, that also looks bolded, but it's not. Do you know what I mean? I think it might just be the calendar, like the format or something. Do you see what I mean?
We can certainly check it, though.
I think that was just-
And I'm super annoying. The only other thing that I noticed, because everything with the dates all looks good to me, is that in April, the 7th be listed before the 12th? I can't help myself. It's just formatting. April 7th is listed after April 12th.
And that's because we originally had April 5th as the curriculum half-day.
Oh, okay. So, just flip-flop those for me, please.
Because that week would have been similar to that November 12th.
Otherwise, it looks great. Yeah, because anywhere else that it's bolded without a highlighter, it usually pertains to something, so.
I think it just does it, because like-
There's like four or five other ones.
Well, the 25th and the 26th-
September 14th looks the same way.
The 29th, it's the first day of school. Like, it makes it feel like there's supposed to be something there.
I think if you printed it, it might not be that way, because like, if you look, August 26th is bolded, and the 29th is, but then September 6th, September 14th, September 15th. Okay, I see what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying? Like, it makes it feel like there's supposed to be something there.
Right. But then if you look at like June 18th, which is a sun-
Maybe that's also not supposed to be there.
Right, and same with, I just sent another one somewhere. May-
Right.
19th.
Yeah, it's just the May 19th.
Okay.
But so, whether that was like maybe a curriculum half-day in the past, and it just needs to be.
And then the 17th should be bolded, then, for all your-
Right.
Right, it should be, yep. Because all the other ones are bolded. Good call. May 17th-
Well, very good. That person could even, November 8th also needs to be bolded, and it's not, it's highlighted, but not bolded.
I'm just looking at highlights, what's, what's important.
Yeah. I guess my only question is why, oh, well, never mind.
Is the, the 12, is June 12th not a half-day? June 12th is a full day? So, the 7th, 8th, and 9th are half-days?
That has to be adjusted. Good catch there. That has to be adjusted because it should be 8th, 9th, and 12th are half-days.
And not the 7th?
And not the 7th, because when we took out November 23rd, that pushed us back a day.
Can you specify also, I'm just looking at it, June 19th, it says Juneteenth, but can we just do the dash, no school? Just because it's a newer holiday and all the other ones.
Well, we-
Yep.
Oh, June 20th, okay.
We might not need it.
Right, we might not, but just to, especially being a new holiday, that might just cause confusion. Looks great.
And Audrey, did you look at the times? Because we weren't good at-
I had asked, yeah. I mean, the only, I mean, I was like, oh, I guess we could like, put up the pickups next to like a semicolon and then the pickup and drop-off on the same line, so it wouldn't look like it's getting like near to the end of the document. But again, I, I wasn't going to be that particular.
It doesn't fit on the same line, Jackie said.
Yeah, because it looked like it's already-
Yeah, it looks like there's room, but, okay.
All right, well, do we need to vote on it? Yes, vote.
Yep.
Do we want to just vote as amended with the little things? I'll take a motion?
Just make sure I have the amendments. So, the bolded dates, we need to swap that, April 12th and 7th. I met Rick Collins, fix the June half-days, Juneteenth, no school, and the May 19th.
Sounds about right to me. Do you guys want to hold off to vote until we see the corrections, or are we good with it?
I feel good just formatting.
It's just formatting issues that we've got, not, yeah, nothing major, so. I will take a motion. I'll motion to approve the school calendar with the amendment. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Back to continuing business. We need to vote on the focus indicators.
Was that supposed to be in the folder?
It was in last week's.
It was in last week's, okay.
Or not last week's last meeting?
Right. Got you. I know what you meant.
5717 score update. Boys are rocking it. Wait a minute. What's the date date?
The 15th.
So, you want to look in the February 1st? Do you want me to move it?
I don't see it in February 1st, though, either.
Because it was on its own separate document, and it was in the Evaluation folder.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so it's under resources.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I think it did. And it's-
It's today.
You can see them in the rubric, in cycle. Summon of evals are listed right next to the goal and then highlighted underneath.
Was it the N-cycle? No.
It's the rubric N-cycle, yeah.
The focus indicators are listed specifically next to each goal and then highlighted underneath.
I just searched the word. I just searched indicator, and my search bar popped right up.
Trying to like make a copy of it to put there. It's in the folder now.
I need help.
It's in the folder now.
It just popped up.
Yeah. It is a Word doc, though, so if you open it as a Google doc, I think it makes a copy or something, or it's a-
So, I see like the little bookmarks on there. Are those, somebody asked that particular thing?
No, that's part of the original doc, I think.
Okay. Because it doesn't look like it goes anywhere, so I didn't want to, I don't want to click on it, but-
If you click on it, it'll just say you can bookmark it, I think.
Okay. All right. So, we've had some time to think about this. I know that you guys did an excellent job going over this the last time. Is there any further comments or discussion or anything that we want to go over? Are you guys ready to vote on it?
I'm good to vote on it. I don't know about Jen. You good?
I think I'm good. I, I feel like Audrey and Jill probably are, because they-
Yeah, right, that's why I wasn't asking them. And I could only say Jen, yet look at both of you and know that we're all good.
All right, well, if that's the case, then I'll take a motion to approve the focus indicators.
I'll make a motion to approve the focus indicators. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent job, you guys.
Good job. Thank you.
Really awesome. Okay. Next up is the school capacity discussion.
There's nothing in the folder, right? I'm shaking that. I saw-
I see people are in the, um, the last time you cast us with kind of, with kind of- Expressing intake, like, on a document, kind of, some of the different things that we discussed, um, the time we worked in the benefits and concerns, because, um, there's not always, they did not, the conversation wasn't always like, this is bad, but this is something that needs to be got through, um, if we're going to move in that direction, and so, um, I don't know how you, um, how much time you want to spend on each individual one. Um, I guess that's one question, um, that I have, but I certainly can go through the different things that we talked about as a committee. Um, I've, we've included some initial documentation, some of them, on some data that we were able to pull, um, and really the focus of our work group, uh, when we met last, after the school committee meeting, um, when the group met, was to talk about, you know, it comes down to probably two big areas, and one of them is the financial piece, which we always have to be mindful of, because we don't have unlimited resources, and our students' achievement, and so, um, some of these things, you know, could have an impact on our long-term achievement and on our financial, um, picture, uh, but some of these things could be, um, really great overall for, for our students as well, so, um, that may not solve our space problem. So, there's, um, certainly a lot to work on. Um, I think Steve and I spoke recently and talked about, you know, just to reiterate, we think that this is not something that needs to be solved for next school year. There may be some, we don't know what the enrollment looks like fully until kids start enrolling, um, but that there's, um, you know, we can be creative, I think, for a year, and, um, and maybe we can be creative for several years. I think that it just becomes, you know, down to kind of what we're seeing and reevaluating periodically, what's working and what's, what's not working, so. So, um, does that make sense for, I don't know, just give a minute to like review it a little bit more, um-
Well, one thing, um, I just want to say, I don't think, um, the, um, opportunity for grade six to participate in JV varsity sports is actually allowed, because we have to get waivers for seventh grade to be, um, certain sports, so I think I'd rather just kind of eliminate that one as a-
Where is that one?
Under East Meadow PK to five, number five. That should either be crossed out, or-
Sure, I can remove it.
Or just put a strike through, so we know that it was thought of, but I just know, um, based on conversations that we had had, um, with-
Yep.
Seventh graders wanting to be able to play, um, varsity sports, there was concerns about age and size of the kids.
Fair enough.
So, it's, it's not going to be a benefit, because there, there's, and there's, there's a whole other thing around, like, middle school sports and different things, of how we're situated and lead and district and everything, so it's, um-
Easy enough.
Yeah. So that was one of the ones that I just saw right away.
Sure.
That I'd like to just, it's, there's too many, um, questions surrounding it, so I don't think we can really categorize it as a benefit or a concern at this point. It's just, it's a giant unknown.
What does itinerant mean?
Um, maybe that's a term that I, I don't know, um, that, a term is a drop-in, so you come in, you go to, the student's family has enrolled full day at, say, Children First, and they just want their, um, the speech services thirty minutes a week, and so they come in and receive the speech service, and then they go to their daycare, with like, their parent comes and drops them off for a minute, waits, and then leaves, and goes-
What's the other word for that?
Drop-in?
No, there's, um, early intervention.
Early intervention is what occurs before the student turns three. So that system runs differently than the preschool three to twenty-one system. So, um, once they turn three, they become ours. That's where we have the EI referrals. Um, we work and collaborate with early intervention to determine if they're eligible for special education services, which is different than what early intervention provides. It's early intervention overall, we talk about that broadly, like, it's, you know, early intervent, interviewing earlier has better long-term out, you know, outcomes for students, um, but early intervention is like, a set of time from birth to two, three years old, so up to they turn three, where their family gets services and support.
Is it actually like two point nine or something, too?
That's, yeah, up to where they start transitioning, but they're eligible until they turn three, and then they come, you know, they have to be, if they are determined eligible before their third birthday, they can become special education students in their public, in their school system at, on their third birthday, they can come to, um, these.
They get, uh, referrals.
For planning purposes, just to be clear, and you can sort of correctly come wrong.
Sure.
But you may be having meetings to determine eligibility for students near or around their third birthday, which of course could happen at any point during the school year.
Right.
So you may be finding students eligible in September, January, May, and then needing to have openings or slots for them.
Yeah.
To be put in for services. Right, and we work with, um, Criterion, who's our main provider, and they center also has, sometimes has students of ours, uh, and we ask for kind of like, how many students are Gramby residents and, that are turning three in the next school year, or in the next, um, you know, eighteen months, so that we can plan for how many spots we have, which is why we kind of know where we are, and then it helps us determine, um, how many sections we need as well. So we do that every year, um, and we ask for it probably multiple times a year, because kids move in, um, to the area or become eligible, maybe they become eligible at two years, one month, and so you also, you know, depending on their progress, they're going to be referring them to, to us for specialized.
So all of these things on here, all the different things that you talked about, there's nothing else that you had, um, gone over? This is all of it, because this is, a lot of it looks like some of the questions that I asked, so I didn't know if you just took the questions that I asked and popped it in, or if this was-
I put your, yeah, I did have your questions at the bottom as well, um, and we tried to answer them best. We put somewhere around three things, so some of them are somewhat duplicates, um, and some of it was just information that we knew that we did discuss, um, but we also discussed your questions in the meeting as well, to make sure that we were trying to address as much as we could. Um, I don't, um-
So this is my first look at this, just because we, you know, got it today, but, and it's great. I love, obviously, some areas have a lot more detail than others, probably because that's where the knowledge base is. Of course, like, you can speak to, you know, great detail with preschool and special education. Is there any way, do you think that some of these other points, do you guys feel good about the level of detail with them, or, I just feel like some of them are smidgen vague, versus some are really specific in other areas?
Sure. I think what happened is, you know, we, we started off doing the first one, doing the second one.
Okay.
We talked about some things differently, um, some things like facilities, um, you know, one of the topics we originally talked about was like, there's those two classrooms that have that common space, and like, removing that wall, making those two full classrooms, we were making one of those classrooms. Um, we didn't go into like sourcing, you know, half, like a, a budget on that, but we had a committee member that said that they, they would do that, and I wa, I was like, if you want that information, we could, although she said, moving a wall is minimum fifty thousand, kind of offhand.
Yeah, right, right.
And it has implications for, you know, right, it has MSBA implications and some other things, so we didn't know to go that far, but we certainly could, um, get something, but of course, it's not going to be realistic.
Right. I guess, I mean, more specifically, like, the East Meadow pre-K to five, I just want to make sure that it's just given the equal-
What page are you on?
I'm on page, what page am I on?
Two.
Two. I just want to make sure that where it says like MSBA discussion, I don't want it to be kind of tiptoed, like, there could also be financial implications. I think that that should be added there.
Yeah, so the, so I have links in there, too.
Yeah.
So, right, the MSBA discussion, I think it's, it's more for you guys to be like, hey, there's that MSBA part. I feel like you guys have good handling on what the question is around MSBA, um-
I just think it'd be nice, because it makes it look like there's no financial implication, and that's just not necessarily-
No, there, I mean, there could be for sure.
The case. So it could be good to maybe just throw that in there.
So related to that, I have also reached out to Tracy, asking if she's dealt with other districts that have possibly been in this similar situation. She has also reached out, I was, I was hoping her, like, just a base knowledge, because she deals with so many districts, um, and then I kind of did like a follow-up, she's like, I haven't responded to you yet, because I haven't heard back from MSBA.
Right, and then, same thing, I reached out to a few people as well, and essentially, I don't know if this is accurate, but I heard that there's a very small chance that we're going to hear back from MSBA, because they're not going to tell you a specific number until it happens. I know that, I think, Jen, you did as well, right, like, kind of-
Well, I, my gut, just based on things that I've heard, is that MSBA is not going to commit to say that there'll be a chargeback or anything, because it was an offhanded comment that we heard, but it depends upon all sorts of situations, and they don't want to get into any kind of a precedent sort of thing, which, to me, follows suit with why maybe Tracy hasn't heard back from them, is they're reluctant to say, oh-
In black and white.
Absolutely need to have money back, but, you know, and then another school, you could point out probably where, you know, there was a need, so I think that's kind of-
I just think-
I was just thinking with her dealing with so many districts, perhaps she's heard of a district having to not make modifications to the building, but change how the building was used after the fact, um, so-
And then it's a, yeah, amount of timing, I'm sure, too. Like, we're less than five years from the time the building's been complete, to having to reuse it, so that could, you know, like, I, I don't want to debate-
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. I just think it would be nice for-
We've reached out, we just haven't heard anything back.
Right.
And I, you know, I, I, um-
I just want to make sure that the concerns are equal, I guess, in every portion, and that, to me, is a very big concern, as well as the town.
To me, my, my big concern is, I, I don't think that they're going to come back, because I think we, like, has been mentioned, there's documentation, there's all sorts of things, there's miles and miles-
Right, it says right in the report.
Right. Um, I've heard multiple things about that report, which I'll tell you-
Mm-hmm.
Later, but offline, uh, because I, I don't want to, uh, add fuel to a potentially incorrect rumor. Um, but I think, to me, the bigger thing is, how good does it make us look for the next MSBA project that we want to try to do for the high school, is, you know, if we didn't get this one right within less than five years, does it make us look like-
However, I feel like it noted, or important to note, that the, there was changes to the plan, for whatever reason, of delimiting two classrooms at some point as well, so, as much as we want to say we didn't follow suit, or whatever the case may be, we were all not involved at that time, or, you know what I mean?
No, and I just, it's, we're not involved, but we're, we are the committee that's the stand-in for the, the decisions that were made.
And, and it's a rabbit hole, because like, I had sent a note to Megan, something from MSBA with our capacity, and technically, number-wise, we are not at capacity. We are for the building.
We discussed that as well, though. So the problem where that lies, that we were talking about in our meeting, and is that in here?
Yeah, so on the, um, it, um-
And the map that went with it is the current one that we're using right now. It is not the one of those two extra classrooms that you were referencing.
Correct.
So this one is correct.
Capacity is different than occupancy, too.
Right, right.
Like, when you use it for a specialized program, you're going to reduce occupancy, and-
Correct. Because it, like, so to say about your occupancy, which is what that is stating, how do you make every class size, you know, you take how many classes we have and divide it by your occupancy amount, then you end up with twenty-one, I think, what did we say, like, twenty-one point five students?
Twenty-one point five students equally distributed across grades K through six, from the spaces that we were currently using.
Yeah.
Get you that, and surely we have some, like, you know, the younger they are, the, the class, whatever it is, generally, they have smaller class sizes, because they're less in, independent, and, you know, need more support, so there's that piece, and then the older students, tech, you know, in theory, can handle more, but more, obviously, they're more independent, and don't need as much support, so you have bigger classes, and I think that's just the trend, you know, and so it becomes-
But then we also have to, right.
Evenly across the board, but it doesn't mean that there's twenty-one in every classroom, it could be twenty-three, and so, and eighteen somewhere else, so.
Right. So that's where it becomes that, like, juggling factor, even with, like, who we're choosing as school choice then, and, you know, to fit that occupancy number, too, do you know what I mean? So then we have to discuss that again as a committee. So, it's kind of like a rabbit hole of numbers, but I think, I like the way you stated that occupancy is different than capacity.
So what is that occupancy?
Whatever that four-
Is it in here?
Forty, four thirty.
It would be four thirty plus twenty preschool students, is what they say, but at the time, they only had forty, four hundred twenty-two students, um, and twenty preschoolers, I wanted to get, you know, depending on the year. So what I put in there was what I got from Jessie, at, at their snapshot, when they capture how many students are enrolled, and who does the October Sims, year over year since twenty-ten, just to show you kind of a bigger picture, and also, I went in to look for it, because I wanted to know what the preschool members were at that time every year, um, primarily because-
Yeah, smaller, because we didn't have as big of a following.
Seeing, you know, from, it ranged, because in twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve, they had thirty-four and thirty, on the year of twenty-fifteen, they had twenty-two, and then nineteen, but then in twenty-seventeen, they had twenty-seven, then thirty, then thirty-five, then thirty-seven, and then the pandemic hit, and last year, we had twenty-four, because we did not have parents that were just, like, as interested in coming, so that was the only year in the recent history that we had only one morning and one afternoon session, we did not have a second classroom, so, or we had, actually, Washington did have three sections, we had one other morning section, um, and so this year is the only, this is the only year we had one morning and one afternoon. So, we've had two classrooms we used, um, certainly since I, I started five years ago at West Street, there were two teachers, and then the two teachers went and came over here and used both classrooms until just this year. It's just we did it differently, like, we had full day for four-year-olds at one point, and then two half-day sessions for our younger students, and our students coming in, and that, like, the kids that have three years of preschool, because of when the birthday fell, were transitioning from EI, so we would have a full-day section, and then two half-day sections, and then most kids were really prepared for kindergarten, um, having that full day.
What did we do when we were at West Street, like, you know, back, like, say, twenty-eleven or thirty-four? Do you have any idea, like, what that looked like with the two classes? Or like, could we?
I don't, I don't, I would have to go-
I'm just curious how-
Teacher here that was in that position at that time, we have to go back, like, in preschool, so we have to go back and talk to somebody else and look at those.
I was just curious how they would have had such big numbers, if-
They probably have, they could have had four sections of, um-
Like, two.
Days.
Four, four sections, so they'd have two half-day classrooms, you could fit, um, fifteen into each one.
Gotcha, yeah. And was there a breakdown of that benefit here, of doing the half-day, or no? Oh, yes, right here is the first one. No, that's half-day kindergarten, is there half-day preschool?
Well, because we do half-day preschool already.
So what are you asking, half-day versus full-day?
It's the, gotcha.
We, yeah. Last year was the first year that we, last year, they're all kind of like, um, they- Last year was the first year we did not do a full-day four-year-old.
Right.
Because we were, um, because of COVID-
Spacing requirements.
And just the enrollment that we were seeing, which just made more sense to have them in, but have them, um, not be here for additional, the full day. Do I get some of that, um, it is still-
Sorry, no, because it was blending, because I was even thinking, like, full day wasn't that long ago, like, I had a preschooler in full day. So sorry, I'm like, it's all blending.
Yeah.
I'm maybe like, half-day here, and then there, and, no, you're good. That makes sense.
I know there was a question on like, how many, I, I couldn't answer that one, you asked about preschool, and how many, a percentage of parents that were, let me just find a question, percentage of students based on census numbers that come to the program we offer now. I know we had fourteen students that were on the waitlist last year as peer models, that wanted to be part of our program, that we couldn't accept at the time, um, so, I, between, you know, all of those. So just that, I don't have the answer that you're looking for, but like, you have, know that we had a pretty significant waitlist at the time.
So, that, um, layout that I had sent you- layout that I had sent you, do we have an updated version of that? It would just be still, like.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing, I had, I have maps of East Meadow for the last four, since it started, um, and how we've kind of changed that, I just wasn't able to put that in, those things in, so I can surely add those.
I just think it'd be helpful to see, kind of, I know programming's changed, but I'm really wondering, like, did they originally think that some of our special education rooms that we're using right now were full classrooms, because they're not?
There was.
I think in the map, originally, they were, but now they're.
Rooms were modified almost immediately, um, to make, um, I think in one of the ADA rooms, there was a wall that was added that wasn't part of it because it was supposed to be a classroom. I think that's what Bill told me on one of our tours. There was some modifications that were done right away to accommodate, um, some special education.
I think that was the map that Stephanie had shared, the one, the room was smaller and the other larger, and now they're equal sized.
Right, so the two rooms that have that common space that we talked about moving out, they're equal size, pretty much. But in the original plan that you had sent me, the one on the right was actually, um, like, larger, it was like a quarter, a half.
Like a three-quarter and a quarter, yeah.
So we modified that as a school?
The Title I rooms.
That was the building.
The other one would've been like, the small Title I rooms here, right?
The ADA room.
But I mean, size-wise, it would've been the same as Kristen or Jenny's, the smaller.
Right, it would've become one very small, long, skinny room, and then a larger pull-out space, but they changed that and made them two equal-sized rooms. The ADA room, my understanding is that it's changed, I think originally, one of them was supposed to be three-quarter, that three-quarter size room. Um, then I heard it was also going into where, um, we had Frank is now, where Chris and Ruby was, or, or kindergarten, because it had the bathroom, you know, that space, um, how it landed in the current spaces in, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Is the current space, the, like, are they using the common area right now, as like, classroom space?
We're using the, every space we can in this building because of, um, protocols and student needs, yeah. So we're, you know, it's, everybody, like, we have kids.
I meant to follow up about that, because I had a concern when we did, like, a lockdown drill, how do you lock down a common space? That to me seems very.
They go right into a classroom.
Into its class.
They go right into the classroom, yeah. You, that, I mean, I think that's the same if you're in the hallway or anywhere else, and you go right into the closest classroom.
We're supposed to check hallways and pull any kids in.
Right, like, there's desks and, yeah, I wasn't sure how that would work, because.
Those are like permanent, like, where the, yeah, they have other spaces to go into.
Okay, okay.
And some of these kids in those programs, too, are also going into classrooms, so they're not necessarily sitting in that common space.
Most of them have, have a desk in the classroom that they're using at some point during the day, or they can participate in inclusion, yeah. And they're counted as a number in the homeroom, too.
Of course, of course.
I think some schools do it a little differently, where maybe that teacher has her own room, but then.
Yeah, we don't do it like that.
So is that common area just because of COVID-related things right now, that that's being utilized? Because, like, of two years, like, that was used by, like, many different classrooms for pull-outs for small groups or projects, or they use the stage, like, for
COVID, yeah.
All kids, so is that because of COVID? Is that something that we're gonna be able to work to?
Yeah, I think the goal is to work that to.
Reduce that way?
But it is interesting, because that was one of the conversations that was asked, and we're like, oh, it's not, it's not conducive to classroom space, but any port in the storm, right? And so that's sort of the mentality that I'm coming at with is, here we are, we had this unprecedented pandemic where we made adjustments to how we're seeing to use the space to accommodate a need.
It's not a classroom, it's like individual, like, communities.
But we were told that we couldn't, couldn't ever have any kind of real instruct, like, instruction, you know? I guess it depended upon who was giving the tour.
Yes.
You know, but those, those are the kinds of things that, it's like, to me, sometimes you have to be creative on how you're doing that, and we're, we're proving that right now in this very time of this pandemic, right? Like, we are doing things that we would never, ever have thought possible or to do, but you're making do to follow protocols and things that are coming from on high that you need to do, so I, I don't want to go to that extreme, but I feel like.
But we don't want to just make do, right? We want to make sure that we're doing, like, what's best long-term in any situation. So I think that we need to make sure we're looking forward.
So I also spoke with somebody at CES last week around this, just to see if they had ideas about, like, a facility, use study and things like that. And after speaking with him, um, you know, he said, like, it seems like you've looked at your spaces every way, left side, upside down, right side, diagonal, like, a facility's use study wouldn't really provide anything new to us, he felt, based on what I explained to him, um, and, you know, he did, he did say, and again, if, I know this has been talked about in previous meetings, not tonight, but he did say, if it was helpful, they could provide some support in terms of, like, planning out a couple next steps if we were gonna look at a six to eight. Essentially, as a committee, no vote means that we maintain our current configuration, and then that's up to the leadership team and building leadership to figure it out. Really, the only vote that would be required would be you're moving a grade level to another building. So in terms of whether it's art on the cart, or music in the space, or using the library as a classroom space, like, those are decisions that we would have to make, um, and obviously inform the school committee about the decision and how we're gonna keep our current configuration. But if we wanted to explore, again, no vote would say to us that we're gonna plan accordingly for next year with this current configuration. If we wanted to explore, because I know one thing people have said, like, well, we don't know what it would look like, we don't know what it would feel like, that hasn't been planned out. If we would like to go a little bit further down that road, there's an opportunity to do so, if we wanted.
Yeah, so I think that might be something to kind of look at, just, just like you said, like, having a little bit, having a little bit more information about some potential avenues might be helpful for people, just kind of envisioning what things could look like, it might even be helpful for us, too. And I think thinking about moving forward and thinking about what things could look like, it's great to be creative, but I also think it's really good to be careful, because thinking about, I think there's lots of different ways to thinking about what's best for students, because there are so many layers, kind of, to what this committee kind of has to view that and kind of, under, like, what lens. But even thinking about instruction, too, and, you know, I was thinking about that in terms of, you know, what a classroom space looks like, you know, and could in, and could, and all of that, but thinking about just how different instruction can look, given, you know, sitting side by side next to somebody at a table versus sitting in front of a classroom of, you know, fifteen to twenty students and trying to, to deliver instruction. So just the difference in kind of those two situations, the use of space can play an important role. And thinking about being creative and thinking about the space and the task, you know, that everybody would have then with a decision that this committee makes, I think it's very important for us to be mindful about what we think about and decisions we make when it comes to students. And I'm not saying anybody doesn't do that, but it just kind of made me think about just how intricate and layered and complex of an issue this still is. And if CES can help out in that way, to just kind of give, like, an outside perspective and even some more information, I think that's great. And Megan, I think this was helpful, too, to just lay out those other areas with additional information, so.
Well, there is gonna be a cost associated if we have CES do that, so that's spending money that we don't necessarily have. Um, but we, you know, if everyone's ready to do that, we should probably find out, get the quote and see how much it is, and if it's, you know, how, how much it is, and, you know, because then that, that adds on to the cost of, you know, potentially moving them, because there's, there's all these other things, like, we've talked about, that there, there is no solution that's zero cost. So, you know, even moving the sixth grade is going to have a cost, because, like, we're, we're gonna, I agree a hundred percent that we should have somebody outside look at this and give us some thoughts, and, and that's gonna be great, but there'll be a cost associated with that, and then they're gonna come back with their recommendations, and we'll have to choose what to do, and then there'll be costs associated with that, to get, to get things, you know, where they need to be with what we need to do, because if we go to a six-eight model, like, was, was brought up the last time, is there will be some changes in curriculum and instruction and how we're doing things, and then there'll be the, you know, the domino effect from there. So I agree, I think we should, you know, we gotta look at every, look at every opportunity. So, um, I guess if you can reach out and find out how much that, um, that is, would cost.
Okay.
And then we, you know, it doesn't make sense to talk about it right now until we know how, how much we're actually looking to, to spend.
Okay. I can do that, and we'll put out the agenda for our G.
Yeah, I think it's just gonna kind of ride out whether we have something new to talk about until we have an idea of where we're going at, and then they'll probably change, change titles, but I, I.
Are there any follow-up questions? Because I know when we had talked in meetings, too, um, Todd had, at one point, stated how he had kind of dove right in to start doing some planning, and then he kind of pumped the brakes on himself, too, and reminded him, like, you know, nothing's been decided too far yet, so he didn't want to get too far into anything, um, but whether or not, I mean, we do have some wonderful resources here already. I do agree that it is nice to see an outside perspective, um.
I think that's the one piece that we're missing, because I honestly think, depending upon, I, I don't think anyone can do the forest for the trees, honestly, at this point, like, I, I, you know, it's, we all feel like we're doing the same thing, I, I truly think we need some outside perspective, with people that can give us, you know, put it together for us for that six through eight, because we're talking about it in this very abstract way. You know, and I, I think to have the outside coming in to give us the perspective that we need, is, it's probably gonna be a worthwhile investment. Because I, I think everyone is so emotionally involved, one way or the other, pro, for, whatever, that I just, I think we need that perspective from fresh eyes, fresh take, look at things, and, you know, tell us how we can make it, make it work, personally. Because we've had, I mean, we've been batting around this idea for more than a year, and there was very opinionated thoughts on, on both sides about how to, how to do it and what it meant. So it was, at first, it was a, you know, a true middle school model, then it was gonna be an academy, then it was gonna be just a sixth-grade academy. So, you know, there's all of those versions sort of out there. Is that not what you're meaning?
Um, I'm. If that's the route you want to go, I'm thinking more from the perspective of, from, um, having people in, um, the subcommittee group or the committee group, too, and there was members that are on both sides of, of the initial issue. Um, but the biggest thing that I was hearing was that they didn't like how rushed it felt. So I just want to make sure that we're actively discussing and working towards whatever we need to do before we run out of time again and feel in that rushed position again, that's like my biggest concern. So whatever it is that we ultimately decide to do, that it has been thoroughly discussed, that we're able to get stakeholders involved, I don't remember if I had said it with you, or, we said it during our last meeting with everybody, too, um, you know, whether or not in the future we're able to hold meetings where people that want to hear, maybe each member from our, um, school capacity committee could even be available to, like, um, have, like, focus groups. And rather than it be administration, be the people that have gone through this process, and people could come in and talk to them during, like, some focus group discussion-type things, where, you know, the community can come in and talk to us, too. And it not be like a whole group of us, but small groups in different little locations or whatever. Um, I just want to make sure that we don't, like, go, not that I'm looking to rush anything, but like, that there's more of the plan in place of whatever we could potentially do, and then we have that time to get all stakeholders involved, and it's not like, oh, wait, now, look, it, suddenly it's this, and we kind of make a decision quick again.
So I, I appreciate and understand what you're, well, I appreciate what you're saying, but I guess I don't a hundred percent understand what you're saying, because I feel like before we can have those kinds of discussions, we need to have this perspective on what the six to eight looks like, right? Because that's the option, one of the things that we need to have stakeholders have discussion on. So we need to have something that's a model for us to discuss. So I, I, I'm just not connecting with what.
I'm thinking of, like, wouldn't it be nice to hear from our stakeholders of the models they're interested in before we're, you know?
You said that this, this document that we have is there, is what you guys put together, and so your option was to do nothing? Or to move the sixth grade?
I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about our community.
Okay, so, so disregarding what the community put forward, you want to put these two options out for the community to discuss?
Not e, like, well, we need to discuss further, for sure, like, I feel like, you know, what are things that we're willing to consider? And, yeah, I want to get our community, like, I'm hoping that through this discussion and hearing us talk, you know what I mean, what, what avenues are they?
So if you were to design what it is, I mean, what are they coming to discuss? I don't want to have just more options and more things.
I don't think it needs to even be that far yet, like, have we offered opportunities, you know, we, you guys were asking us, offering opportunities for the community to provide feedback on what their wishes are. You know, we had the subcommittee, but we didn't do any external, like, surveying, remember you guys were asking us, are we gonna survey the community? Are we gonna, like, where we have, um, um, what's the name of our other committee that I'm not on? The, so, what's it called? Our sub-community relations, like, you know, whether community relations can look into somehow reaching out, because we haven't, you guys had asked us if we were surveying people and stuff, whether that's something that we start doing of getting some feedback before we take the avenue of paying anybody for anything, you know?
Okay.
I, I'm honestly, my head is swimming with, I, I mean, you know, because what I'm worried about is that we're gonna, we're in budget season, so none of these focus groups are really gonna happen until after, after town meeting, because I feel like all of our agendas are gonna be pretty, pretty busy with that. But I'm, I could be completely wrong in that, maybe we feel like we can have, add some extra meetings and get some focus groups in, um, and that's great, so we do that. But now, what, now we're gonna get all of that information, and now we have to compile that information, and then we're gonna be putting off having CES look at how to do a model, so I feel like all of that is kind of pushing, pushing the timeline. And we don't want to rush, but at the same time, we have a sense of urgency, I feel like, so.
Agreed.
So I, I'm not, I guess I'm not a hundred percent, um, solid, are we good for this coming school year or not? Because I felt initially, we felt like we needed to make a vote and make a decision for this coming schoo, school year. So if.
I did, not, no.
Feel that way, I mean, I think we all discussed this, it was the year out for the twenty-two.
So I thought this year out, I thought the year out was from when you guys started last August, like, that meant this coming August.
And that's what we want to avoid, is it feeling like it's this, like, urgency, we need to decide right now, you know, so that we can have plans in place ahead of time.
But I think realistically, we need to plan for twenty-two, twenty-three with the current configuration.
Well, I think we've just said that, that we have, like, that we have to, like, we don't, there's real, I mean, it's February, right, so if we don't want to rush, you know.
I think, no, twenty-two, twenty-three will stay as it is.
We're, we're planning the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right.
To make a decision.
So let's work backwards from that, then, if we need to have twenty-three, twenty-four.
Which isn't even a guarantee that we need it, but I want to make sure we have, like, we're, I feel like I'm articulating myself.
And I just, because I, I see, I see all the, the points, I just, I'm thinking, not that I want to think backwards, too, but I don't want to have focus groups survey the community and kind of get the same feedback and same information. and kinda get the same feedback and same information back that happened. Because it is, you know, unless people are watching all the meetings and seeing all the information that was brought forward again. And then having that kind of re-presented to them with the pros and cons, like out of focus group or something like that, you know, I'm not sure.
So you wanna present it before.
A different outcome from those focus groups or surveys. But I'm, my, like, I'm this way now. But my question is if we flip that with the potential of having, whether it's somebody outside or somebody inside, like regardless, but we can decide what that looks like based on information that we get, if it makes sense for us to do or not. If we had more information about those specifics, what does it look like in a six to eight model? And like in, in their day and things like that. I feel like if there was that information alongside of some of this, then there might be something to actually bring people in to talk about or give the opportunity to talk about in that way. Otherwise, I'm not sure what.
Yeah, like I don't wanna go and focus group people cause we're gonna have the same people participate. And I'm really like, I already told you what I think about this and we have all of that information. We should have all of that survey. So if we wanna, we can regurgitate all of that and look and see what people's thoughts were on all of that. I feel like we've collected the data, it's just interpretation.
Well, I just, it made me think about how you guys were asking us if we were reaching out to the community. So I didn't know if that was something that our committee wanted to do. Cause we did not do that.
And I think it's important, but I think it's important.
At the right time.
At the right time, given the right information.
We have to have two or three clear options and let them weigh in on that. And, you know, and maybe you have the two options and, and what you've done, you guys have done as a committee for the last however many months since you started that, you know, the base, it's, we do nothing and kinda suck it up or we move the sixth grade. Like that's what it essentially boils down to, right? But it's not, I mean, there's, what we've been saying is that if we were to start with a blank slate for East Meadow, how to use the space, we're gonna come up with the same thing. Cause that was my thing. It's like, if, if you were to pretend this was a brand-new building and you got to walk in and had your druthers on how we're using space, being creative, but being mindful, would you come up with the same layout? And I've been told now that there is no other way to utilize the space in this building except for how it's being used.
Megan can tell you, I've attacked the map with a dry erase marker several times. But Stephen, I mean, like, it, yeah, I feel you. Other than moving walls and starting that full process of like construction on a brand-new building. You know what I mean, like.
Yeah, or moving our special subject, like classrooms out of there. I mean, art, music, I mean, even this space, this space, you know.
Well, that was one of the things that I had asked before is, you know, I've, I remember when I was a kid and we had space issues before, people were very creative with the scheduling, you know? Like there was, there was, people were being pulled out for some special help. There were some people being pulled out for advanced classes. Then, and they had the other kids doing something and they may have used a rotating space. So that the, there was never an empty building, or there was never an empty classroom when I was in, uh, West Street. It was like a carousel. You're moving around all the time. And I understand, I'm ancient and that was, you know, it's not how we do things now and I, I get it. But they were creative with how they were using the space. And so, um, and I, I, and I know that we don't wanna just be creative, um, to be creative. Like I, I get that. But I think there's a lot that we can talk about, but it's almost nine o'clock. So I think it's eight fifty-five. I'm gonna give us five more minutes if everyone's okay with that to discuss this cause we still have quite a lot left on our agenda. And let's, in this next five minutes, let's figure out what we wanna do. Like, I think Stephen had the action to reach out and just get, for us the information, how much it actually would cost. If it's a hundred bucks, hell, I'll do it myself. Like, you know, like I, I'll write the check now and do it. But if it's fifteen thousand dollars, is that when we know we have a budget crunch? Is that something that we want to spend the money? And if we know that we don't wanna spend the money, then it's to, time to look in and see how, who we can get to help us kind of do some of that stuff. That's what I think. So five minutes, four minutes, eight fifty-six, but we're gonna close this conversation at nine.
So we're gonna close it, I, but the only thing is just to clarify, we are gonna keep the model that we have right now for the next twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. And, right? Or no?
Are there two preschools next year?
So, right, so we have, we are looking to plan for two preschool classrooms, but we only need three sections. So we have an opportunity to practice being creative because we may, if, depending on how things go, that may mean.
And when we say.
We don't, you know, like.
When we say keep it the same, we're saying current configuration, pre-K through six, seven through twelve. It doesn't mean that it's gonna be, like, there's three sixth grade classrooms this year. So there's gonna be three sixth grade, like.
That's not.
Right, right. Same thing, East Meadow, pre-K through six, junior senior high school, seven through twelve. Everything else would be on the table in terms of being creative.
So if we say we have three sections, do they have to be half-day sections?
No.
No, they could be full day.
Could we do a third dividend?
So I, so that would.
Because we do not require, we do not pay for transportation. People are brought up.
We do pay if they have it in their IEP, yes. So we would have a, a cost for that. And then we would also have a challenge because you, that would exceed the school day to have three sections at two and a half hours. So that would be something else that would have to be budgeted for, um, to pay and prep and lunch. So how that gets done would be, um, you know, uh, an interesting thing to, uh, work on.
It really causes an issue with transportation as well. If we're talking multiple vans.
Yeah, because we also have, they run.
To and from, to and from, to and from.
Right, and then we have the K to six population, the excesses are vans as well. And so there, there's a lot there and there are, you know, we're still having some challenges with transportation short, you know, staff shortages from, in transportation from time to time, um, but.
But I guess where I was going is the information that you guys presented to us, we do have a little bit of flexibility in our timeframe potentially to keep the K to six. At least for the immediate year, for sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we can attack this for sure, but we don't need to exceed nine o'clock. We still have a whole bunch more to go on, right? And then, I'll just circle back.
So I don't know if it needs to be on the, I mean, we'll leave it on the next meeting. I'm not expecting you guys to have anything new. You know, we'll just check in cause, you know, I don't.
I can have the maps that I have.
That'd be great.
They're, they're like stretched out, you know, how we've changed. That's fine if there's anything else.
Great.
All right, we have one minute left. Anything, any last things? Joseph, please stop talking.
You know, I'm just saying, I'm welcome.
Okay. Um, I guess what we're supposed to do is the enrollment dashboard, I skipped right over it. Do we wanna table that till the next meeting? Is everyone okay with that?
No, you're in, yeah. Enrollment was after school capacity.
Oh, sorry, I, I'm, I'm shutting down, all right.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
I don't see an updated one.
I think it just updates automatically.
Where was that again?
It's in the school committee resources folder.
Mine's being funky. Oh, there we go. Does it just take your time?
No, it just, it doesn't, in October, it doesn't like to stay at all. It likes to just jump.
Wasn't there a way that, to clear like the rest of these out of here?
It's not letting me change it.
Yeah, won't let me either.
It's so far away.
Oh, cause you have to hit okay.
Where? On the dropdown menu and then.
Oh, and it moves too.
So.
October is moved.
For real?
Someone moved to October or did I just do it on mine?
I think just yours. How come?
Yours aren't all there.
So even though I see all of the months, I'm looking at January, right? Lovely. I can't tell.
Why is that so?
I think I said seven twelve, but no, it's not popular.
That's, that's accurate, seven twelve.
Back to seven twelve, we added five, lost seven.
All right, do we have any particular questions or?
Just so everyone knows too, in terms of school choice, we did send out a letter to a hundred, or one million school choice families, asking them to respond by March first their intentions to continue from school choice. We've heard back from forty-five as of today and all reported that they would be returning, so.
So when we do that, you don't count those seats in our new school cho, in which you have the new school choice. They're part of our district now.
Yes.
Every year, right?
Yep.
Until they tell us otherwise?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so they'd be counted in the number that we might use to determine whether we're gonna spot them or upgrade them. But they're considered school choice, but they're ours.
Um, any questions on enrollment dashboard? If not, I feel like we should.
Well, it says school choice discussion. Was that just the discussion, Stephen?
We had just talked about it last month, that school choice would be part of multiple discussions tonight. So I think, um, Jackie had just added that in.
I think it should probably stay on there cause at some point we need to have our, uh, discussion, right?
It's usually in March, right?
Yeah, it's usually in March and you guys usually bring a proposed number of seats, yeah?
So if we talk about it at the first meeting and then come with some proposals for the second meeting.
Terrific.
So we'd be prepared to vote in the second one in March?
It could be March twenty-second.
Okay. Is everyone good moving on from the enrollment dashboard? I feel like I rushed it, but I just.
No, we're good.
I'm good.
Now that you said three twenty-two, though, while we try to get Ally, isn't that also, we're doing a public hearing that day? I wrote that down, on three twenty-two?
Add a line, the budget stuff to our meeting calendars.
Should I bring a sleeping bag?
It's not gonna be a full.
It's not gonna be adjusted to.
Yeah, it'll be before, it could be before.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be early, like dinner.
Dinner.
Can we bring food in?
Intermission.
If we're all eating, we can take our masks down, right?
She's here, yeah.
Six feet apart.
So, and I'm, I'm gonna kinda hop in, maybe, in St. Ally, but. So we had originally voted, um, the committee had voted to only allow home fans with the decrease in cases, um, and getting closer to the postseason, we're proposing that we do allow away fans. The potential, there is some potential impact should one of our teams have a home game, um, earn a home game, that if we don't allow home and away fans, they would, um, push us to a neutral site. Which would then allow home and away fans, so. You know, so, you know, I think the mask wearing and stuff at games, Ally and Brittany have both reported, people have been, um, really good about it. And, um, we just felt like this was an opportunity. We don't meet again really between now and the postseason starts. So there's probably three or four games, I think two, or two or three games, um, total. So this would allow, um, away fans to attend.
I love it. I, I, uh, I've been coming to some of the basketball games and it's nice to see people getting together and, you know, I, uh, I feel like it's, we have the, the doors open and the fans going and.
Well, and like you said, if we don't, they're just gonna go to a different site and going to allow it, so.
And I think two unintended outcomes of this were, um, right, a loss in revenue for athletics. It wasn't intended, it was thought of, but, you know, we knew we'd have an impact. And the other one, and this came from a parent of an away team, like it does set up like an unfair home court advantage, right? Like you're playing at home, but then the gym's silent when you're shooting free throws. And then you have the away team and that, you know, and it's seems maybe more unsportsmanlike that it really is in actuality. But, you know, one parent reached out from another community and that was something that I hadn't really thought of when we originally talked about it, certainly not intended. He was very gracious about it and said he knows that's not the intention, but just wanted to share that. You know, and I think considering the circumstances when the vote was originally made, I think it was the right thing to do and we were trying to make sure that we were keeping people safe, so.
We are, I don't know if you all can hear me, but, um, and I know you can't see me, but you're not missing much. I'm sitting in my driveway in my garage. There's two schools left, uh, actually three schools left. We're one of the three in Western Mass that hasn't lifted our spectator, um, restriction. So I think Smith Folk is one in Springfield and obviously we understand why Springfield. But, um, so we're really just, ultimately everything Stephen said is what we're looking for. We would, you know, love your support in moving this forward. Um, so we can, you know, we were supposed to reevaluate in January, but obviously after we had returned, you know, we noticed a bit, a bit of a spike. So we were trying to err on the side of caution, but I think we're at a place now where we're looking for your support to allow away fans.
I wish we had been able to have that conversation earlier so that they could have had them for tonight or for the senior nights, cause it would have been nice for, for those kids, for their senior, um, senior nights to have the.
I don't know where they would have sat in there.
I don't know where they would have sat in there.
But I mean, that's just like, that, it was always that way. Like, you know, when you had the big rivalry games, it's like, you know, people were standing and it was, it was awesome. So it's exciting to see people coming back, so. I, is there any other discussion or anything? So can I have a, um, a motion? Do we need to vote or we're just looking for support, right?
No vote.
Vote, okay. Uh, can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second? I'll second. All of them favored?
Aye.
So excited to have them back and as far as I'm concerned, effective, then maybe, there you go.
Okay.
Light 'em up!
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ally.
The boys won?
She's left. She's gone.
I think Adam keeps muting me. Yes, the boys won.
Why, what do I do?
Did she sign off now?
Conversation thing on my, someone help me. I don't know what I did.
Know what you're doing over there.
All right, um, MSBA update.
So, yeah, so you all, I think I sent you the letter. The letter's also in the folder. Um, we did receive this letter on or about February third, um, that they were, MSBA decided that they were not moving Grammy Junior Senior High School forward. Um, you know, I don't. moving Grandby Junior Senior High School forward. You know, I don't think that came as a huge surprise to us, but I also think we've gotten some good feedback from the MSBA, and it's also created some engagement with the town, and so part of this process about three or four weeks ago was Chris Martin reaching out to John Libera, asking if they, if we would have the support of the finance committee. At that time, that support was lukewarm, right? Like, they had questions, they weren't part of the conversation leading up to it, things like that, which are all fair, was fair feedback. So when we received this letter, I actually got an email inviting me to a meeting with Chris Martin, John Libera, and Bob Glassman of the Fin- Finance Committee. We met last week. And the email that Chris sent was to John Libera and saying that we would like to pursue another statement of interest in 2022 and would like your support, and asked for a meeting to discuss some questions and concerns that they had, that the finance committee might have. And I would say the conversation went very well. It was amicable. You know, there were comments made, like, you know, this has an opportunity for some reimbursement, and we have a building that's in need, and we might have repairs that won't be reimbursed if we don't pursue something like this, but there's also a significant bill that would come with a project like this. We estimate, estimated roughly our current building's at about eighty-six thousand square feet, so we estimated about ninety thousand square feet at six hundred a square foot, which brings us to about fifty-four million dollar project. They said to estimate about a sixty percent reimbursement. We really estimated probably about a fifty percent reimbursement, because there's certain things that aren't reimbursable, right? So just because you build, add all these things, doesn't mean you're gonna get reimbursed on everything, so put us in about the twenty-five to twenty-seven million dollar range, right? It's a pretty significant price tag for anything. So we had a conversation about many things, borrowing rates, construction supplies, timing, interest loans, like, all those things, right? But we're talking in, like, possibilities.
Hypotheticals.
Right, it's all hypothetical, because Jen mentioned it earlier, and something else, like, this project now is four or five years out, so to predict what the true cost would be and things like that. But it did get the conversation started, which I feel encouraged by. It's optimism, and one thing that did come up, and it won't come as a surprise to any of you, because I think we've heard it before, and the, John Libera asked, he said the finance committee, you know, is charged with looking at many things and some things unpopular, and, you know, some then theoretical, and one of the things that he asked about was the prospect of regionalization for grade seven through twelve, which brings us back to our prior conversation that ended at nine o'clock, and it should continue to be ended for now, but, like, is it really seven through twelve? Is it six through twelve? Right, but that's like a fair question to be asking. And I would say, I felt like, based on the way that he asked it, he's asking that legitimately as a question, not knowing whether or not there would truly be a cost savings. So I reached out to Adam after that meeting, I reached out to Jen after that meeting, and, you know, with Jen, I kind of said, like, can I start doing a little bit of digging? Can I start doing a little bit of homework, just to know, like, what some next steps might be, right? I'll be very clear that I am not in favor of regionalization. I believe that the best opportunity is to maintain K through, pre-K through twelve education in Grandby, but if we can explore that and figure out what the financial impact would be, the educational impact of it might be, then doing our due diligence might be worth it. I don't know for sure, so.
Well, I feel it's worth it in the biggest case, is that it alleviates the question that Fintom has had, thinking that, you know, if, if it doesn't cost us a ton of money to be able to answer some of that, and it takes a little bit of blood, sweat, and tears, I feel like maybe it's time to sort of alleviate that thought, you know? Like, we all have, we've all had conversations between and betwixt where we all have pretty strong feelings about it, but we all don't necessarily know, I don't think, maybe some of you do. I know, I certainly don't. I won't speak for all of you, like, the specifics, like, dot the i's, cross the t's of what it actually looks like, so if we can do it for nothing, like, let's, you know, let's, I, I, that's what I told you when we had the conversation, is like, I feel like, rather than us always feeling like we're on the defense for that question, maybe we, you know, get the information, so we can put it to bed one way or the other, you know? Maybe there's something we're missing, who knows? And then that goes back to, like, the pre-nine, ninety, uh, nine AM, nine PM conversation that opens up a whole other can of worms.
So after doing a little bit of research, talking to some other superintendents, Adam and I set up a call with, I forget what office they're from, but they deal with regionalization essentially.
At your hat?
Uh, no, at DESI.
Okay.
At DESI, so I think the next step, if we're gonna pursue a next step, and I think it might make sense that we put this back on the next agenda and put it to a vote, if it's a next step that people want to take, I think it's a pretty simple one. The way that I see it, based on these conversations, is a letter from this committee going out to other local school committees, asking if they're interested in regionalization, yes or no, or interested in exploring it further. There's a couple potential outcomes from that. One is, and I said this to John and Chris and Bob last week, too, one potential outcome is everybody says no, and that really would end the conversation at that point, because we can't regional- regionalize with ourselves, right? Like, we're not gonna have to save any money doing that. So that would be one outcome. Another outcome would be, we have a yes, or we want to explore further. Then the next step, as I see it, would be a conversation with that school committee in their town, us in our town, about supporting a study to see if it's the most educationally, financially sound decision. And that's something that I firmly believe we would have to outsource, and, you know, I don't know for sure, but I would think we would get some support from the town. We would need to get some support in town for funding something like that, either from the Dunnyhoo Center at UMass Amherst, or Collins out at UMass Boston, could potentially put together that study. But that all becomes a moot point if the answer is no, right? And I think there's a lot of things that we would have to consider as to who that goes to, right? Is, you know, does it make sense that it's going to a place like Chickaby? Probably not, right? Like, Chickaby probably doesn't need to regionalize. Springfield doesn't need to regionalize, you know? It would likely be...
Beltertown doesn't, I mean, Beltertown is kind of full, too, no?
Yeah, and I think, like, those are the, like, it's the Beltertown, so Hadley, Hadley, Hatfield?
That's far.
Forty-five minutes each way. So, like, I think there's some questions that we would have to explore, but in terms of next step, and the potential for ending this conversation for now would be to go out and ask and get some formal yeses, nos, or we'd like to explore it further. So I know I said I was excited by the conversation, and I was, and I am, like, optimistic about, about it, but to Jen's point, it might be an opportunity to explore, cross it out, and by exploring it, doesn't mean any of us are in favor of that option, regionalization, but maybe we learn something about it that, oh, this could work. Maybe we have a partner and they say, yeah, we want to regionalize, and we want it to be in Grandby. We don't know that either.
Then I'm gonna wanna be in that building.
That's the thing. Then there would have to be a building project regardless of...
But then, when it's a regional building project, it's a different type, though, correct?
A regional, yes, a regional building project.
And you also change your division, like, there's a lot of, there's differences with...
And then there's more than just our voice.
Correct.
So it's like, if we do two ta- if we do two towns, it's two voices.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole downstream effect, but honestly, it scares the heck out of me, because it's not really something that I, I lived through the, go around in this in the nineties. I was one of the students that was part of it, so.
But I think to explore it doesn't mean that you're for it or against it. It's no different than we're saying, like, we might contact CES about sixth grade, like, you know, to gather information. I don't think it's ever a bad idea.
I think that people were emotional, emotionally charged about one in the sixth grade, I think. We ain't seen nothing yet at third, if it goes downhill. But I do think we should probably do that, so I don't know if you want to do a draft, and we, you know, can do that. I, is everybody in favor of that?
I move. I put it up for a vote for the next meeting, but I can have a letter drafted prior to that.
Yeah, I have, I have a draft, so we can see when we're voting, like, what, what it is and how we're looking at it.
So I can draft a letter, and I can provide a list of potential districts that we would send it to.
Sure.
Is there anything else that you would like to see?
Anybody?
No, I don't think. Yeah, I think in essence, if we just take this step, then we don't necessarily have to move forward with anything else.
Right.
Unless there's any type of interest, and then we can decide what that might look like depending on any interest.
All right. Well, that's exciting. Next up, superintendent's report.
I only put one thing on here, and, so it's in your folder, so late Friday, we learned that, and we're excited for, we had four wrestlers on our, on the Grandby wrestling team qualify for states. That's a great thing for wrestlers, and a great thing for our wrestling program, so we want to certainly celebrate them. The conundrum is that we, that meet is this Friday, and if they perform well, they'll wrestle again Saturday, and the past tradition has been that they would spend the overnight, the Booster Club helps support the cost of the hotel and everything, they'd have permission slips from parents, follow all the masking guidelines and things like that, but an overnight field trip does require a vote, so I'm asking for a vote out of necessity, because of just how it all played out.
Yeah, it's not, it's not like you could have put it on because we didn't, you know, you didn't...
Meeting has to be posted, right?
Right, so, any discussion before we take a motion? Congratulations to the boy, or boys and girls, I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, four. Yeah, two from Grandby.
Fantastic. If you, there's no discussion, I'll take a motion.
We'll make the motion.
Second?
All second.
All of us in favor? Excellent. That's all I got?
That's all I put for today. The one other thing I put, the town meeting, like, they had town meeting for that first Monday in May, but I don't know that that's a firm date, because it did say subject could change, and I can only say that.
I just got two things. One, our standing East Meadow Lightning update, we're still waiting on parts, so I will update you in two weeks. And two, we've kind of already adjusted, but the budget process for FY twenty-three, quickly, again, we've got department heads and principals this week, we've got a real high level, you know, view of what they're asking for and what their needs are for FY twenty-three, and in the coming weeks, Steve and I will be meeting with them again and really get into the details of developing the FY twenty-three budget. We'll obviously update you guys every step of the way, so. Any questions on that process? We touched upon it earlier, but there's any questions to answer?
No. I just want to circle back with you for superintendent's report, because there was one thing that we, from the talking part, that we didn't address, so, the elephant in the room, there's real...
Real short and sweet.
You should read the language from your letter. That would be...
So we did announce, apologies for that, we did announce last week that we would be opening up a principal search for...
Nope, not that one.
East Meadow School?
What's that about the bar?
Oh.
But now that you started.
But we are opening up a search for a principal at East Meadow that posting should be out, and a letter did go out to the community on that. In terms of masks, thank you, we do, there is currently a Grandby Board of Health mask mandate that we fall under, that, you know, we know that DESI is no longer gonna require masks after February twenty-eighth, but we will continue to be masked in the Grandby public schools due to the Grandby Board of Health, and they, they did have a meeting tonight. I did not anticipate a change in that, based on the conversation, conversation, although I do anticipate they will keep a close eye on the data as we return from vacation, and they may have a conversation early maybe, early March meeting, excuse me, about changes to that, but nothing to date right now.
Any comments or anything about that? No? Okay. See ya.
So, just as an update, I did receive the email that has the, the annual report and attached to it, so I just wanted to check in about how it would be best to get you the information, if I just drop it into one of our next folders, or if you just want me to forward you the email with it attached, so you can just look at it at your, your...
I think a folder might be all right, just within this school committee twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two folder, just create a CES folder and drop it in.
Drop it in, and then you can just kind of look at any documents in there.
Yeah, and then it's there for the year, like, you know, as a resource, it's just there as, we talked about it, because that's what you had done before, Jen, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Anything else? Comments, questions? For our agenda next time, we don't really have, well, next time is the eighth, and we are going to do, are we going to do, because that'll be March, so will we do enrollment dashboard?
Yes.
Are we doing that presentation?
What's today? Yes, the next meeting is the eighth, because it's school vacation, that's why.
Yep, it's the eighth.
Okay. So we'll do enrollment dashboard, we'll keep school capacity on there, just as a sort of living thing on there. Also, for the eighth, we said we were going to have some budget information, probably keep the mask stuff on there, because we've been doing that. Anything else that we think?
Check with the CES quo and draft in a letter for...
Yeah.
Regionalization.
Regionalization, the form, we talked about the form, the assessment conversation, correct, on that meeting?
Yeah, and probably safe to put masks on it.
Yeah.
I have a question that's not agenda, but I was looking just in our school committee folder, and I noticed that we only go up to March twenty-second for planning.
That's for elections, so we don't know who's, because Jen's seat is up, so we don't know.
Gotcha. I was just trying to plan something for April, and I was just like, oh, what dates are we in?
Well, May is after April.
We have April meeting dates.
Where?
April twelve.
Enter your resources again, there's meeting dates.
For the, okay, I'll look at that after then.
April twelve, ten, twenty-six.
Okay, well, that's great news, because I wasn't interested in either of those dates, so thank you.
And those are the last two that we have.
I have one May ten, too.
Yeah, we have May, May tenth, and there's, I thought there was two.
May tenth, twenty-fourth, and June seventh.
Yeah, there's not folders in there, but we have gone through the whole year.
Okay, that's, that's totally fine. What Stephen just gave me was great news. I was just looking at the first week of April.
I see it. There's two separate. April twelfth, April twenty-sixth, May tenth, and May twenty-fourth, and then nothing after that.
I have April 12th, April 26th, May 10th, and May 24th, and then nothing after that.
I actually have June 7th and 21st, too.
I do, too.
Oh, yeah, we had, we had put those out as, as dates, but knowing full well that the new, new committee member, we might have to make adjustments when that person joins. Speaking of which...
Unless, unless Jen stays.
Jen stays, I thought, did you take papers out?
Whoa, let's open up a spot!
We're just, you know, throwing it out there.
She's getting rid of that mask!
I think that was the game, then, but I thought there was, I, I, I'm just gonna stop talking.
Sounds good.
I'll make that folder for CES, you'll work on the agenda. That'd be great.
All right, perfect.
I'll put a motion to adjourn, is that too soon?
No, no, it's not too soon.
Do we...
Executive session.
The executive session's on there, so...
No way.
Okay. All right. Vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. We want to do a roll call for us?
Sure. Ms. Parthos?
Aye.
Ms. Perrin?
Aye.
Ms. Smollett?
Aye.
Ms. Suda?
Aye.
Ms. Paulier?
Aye.
All right, so we are adjourned, thanks, everybody, and we will go to executive session.